It's already, it's already starting. It's all right. Once a collector, always a collector.
Oh, you use Jeffrey and Jeffrey?
Perfect. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero please. Susan, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, that would be great. If you could do that, that would be terrific. Thanks.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, as you may have, may have seen, exiting the room, uh, new treasurer collector for the town of Sunderland is Susan Warner, uh, as, as was, um, as we had our conversation, uh, just, uh, six forty-five we started, uh, Ms. Warner was an applicant in the very first round of a treasurer collector's permanent search. She was actually tendered an offer on that first round and did not accept the offer, um, and she has come back in the second round, applied, and has accepted an, uh, an offer to come and, and join the team here in the town of Sunderland. So after December ninth, maybe a week after December ninth, stop in and say, uh, say hi to Susan Warner. She's, uh, got a long history of working as treasurer collector in towns around us, your neighbors, and, uh, we look forward to her tenure here. Okay, we have, uh, in front of us the minutes of, uh, November eighteenth. And that was a, a joint meeting. We have one motion or a second?
Second.
That's okay. We have a motion and a second, and we'll hold for that. There was a, um, there was a, a joint meeting with the library trustees and the appointment of, uh, a trustee until the next election, uh, as well as an update from the regional EMS. Uh, we also had, uh, sewer connection application we reviewed at, uh, I think Chevron. Kind of excited. Sunderland Chevron going in. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero, please. Tom, uh, we have in front of us, I'm gonna blend the two items, uh, the regional EMS IMA, uh, and there was the first meeting of the BOO, uh, a week ago. And the regional I- EMS IMA, I wanted to, uh, talk because the recommendation, I wanted to have you address, there's a recommendation in front of us to amend the IMA. Um, and now the BOO, I believe all three communities have got their representatives, uh, appointed. You had your first meeting, and this is a recommendation on an amendment to that IMA. Maybe we can go through the first part of it, just exactly what it, what, what the, what the consensus of the BOO was.
Did, did, did you talk to the other town administrators?
I did.
And what'd they tell you?
They said, uh, first of all, Deerfield has voted to approve the IMA with the amendment already, and Whately Board of Selectmen will be voting the amendment on Tuesday, December third.
Okay. Basically, what the amendments, what's gonna do, Scott, is like on par- on page three, paragraph two, it talks about the transition and the transitional governance. And in, in there, it says that until the, uh, um, South County ambulance starts actually running units, that the EMS directors in each town are, are to be on the transition team, but they're supposed to be non-voting members. I don't know why we would make it non-voting to begin with. Um, those are the guys that, if we are appointing them, that they're the ones that we want on that group. So I don't know why it was ever non-voting. It was probably in the wisdom of town council or somebody to put it that way, but we all agreed at the meeting that it shouldn't be that way, so. So the, 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 the transition governance group, whatever we call it.
Called the Board of Oversight during the transition phase.
Yeah. That group that Margaret-
It's, that's what it reads.
That group that whatever Margaret just said, that got together and s- said, "We're gonna recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we amend the IMA by removing that, uh, paragraph."
And it allows them to be voting members.
Allows them to be voting members, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know why it would ex- I don't, you know, it probably made sense while we're talking about it, but now it doesn't make sense.
Sure. You get to the first meeting, the group gets together, and, and you've got two tiers or two, two levels of participants, and you're right, in many ways, an advisor is one thing, but you're talking about an organization that is in the transition. These people will be integral, and then the Board of Oversight, once it's done and running, the Board of Oversight may not, it goes to its original constitution, if you will, composition. Original composition. Okay. The reason I asked for the, uh, this to be brought up here is that the Board of, of the IMA, as at most organizations, the IMA sets out the design of the or- of the organization, its composition, and its recommendations to the Board of each of the three member communities for the selectmen for amendments. And so this being the very first one out of the starting gate, I thought it was important to have the, uh, IMA one-on-one all over again.
Right. No, it's a good idea.
Okay. So the consensus across the other three other participating communities, there's already discussion about the change? Seems like you said it'd be very, very practical. It's just transition. Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded to amend the IMA to include voting membership of, uh, the directors, excuse me, the-
We're actually just striking a paragraph.
Well, striking the words "as a non-voting member."
Right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero, please, and we can notify the other communities of the vote. It's interesting that the, um, the, the work, the Board of Oversight, uh, of course, is, is a, couldn't recommend, is a also recommending body to the Boards of Selectmen. So it's, it's the, which, which, which step is it first, so.
It's important to make sure in my mind that was very clear. Chicken or the BOO, huh?
Chicken or the BOO. Okay. Uh, town administrator updates?
Okay, I've just got a few. Um, we have taken our first steps now to, uh, call the bond for the elementary school reconstruction by, um, providing a notice of redemption to the, the financer. Again, we're gonna be using, uh, Unibank Financial Services to get us through this process, and that bond is callable on January fifteenth. Also, I have a recommendation, or the Board has a recommendation before it from the highway superintendent, on the truck body bid. Um, the highway superintendent is recommending, um, acceptance of the, uh, bid submitted by H.P. Fairfield for thirty-five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars. That bid complied with all requirements of the IFB. Uh, there were three other bidders, two of which, three, all three of which did not meet, um, all the specifications, or didn't even submit specifications. Um, and one of those, uh, bidders actually exceeded, um, of all the other bids. So, um, the highway superintendent does have documentation, um, checklist showing, um, the bid comparisons and the spec comparisons, IFB, to the actual bids themselves. So we have documentation required by chapter thirty B, and, um, the total chassis and truck body bid equals seventy, uh, five thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars, which is one thousand sixty-three dollars under the seven, seventy-seven thousand dollar appropriation. I support the highway superintendent's recommendation, and I would ask the Board to authorize me, uh, to sign off on the truck body bid, uh, acceptance.
Discussion?
And we're about to get snow.
I guess.
But it says it's a hundred days to deliver.
I, I just think it's interesting that you have, you put out the bid, and so many people get it wrong.
Uh, it's very interesting. That's, that, I mean, a few of them actually, I mean, you may see here, this is only a piece of it, the actual, uh, spec sheets aren't here, this is, these are the comparison sheets. But the specs were very, very clear, what type of steel, what thickness, what type of plow, what type of hoist, and they, they didn't provide what the town was, was looking for, so.
I just, it's just amazing. I mean, MHQ does this all the time.
Yeah. I was gonna surprise them.
No specs.
Yeah, surprised them that myself.
No specs. No spec details from that particular vendor.
Kinda typical of the vehicle buying process sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, David, you, you actually do a, we tend to drive, you raise a good point, we tend to drive them by, by price.
Yeah.
Now look at this, and there's a, effectively a twenty percent spread between high and low also. Has George worked with H.P. Fairfield? We know them, they-
Um, he, I, I don't think he has directly as the superintendent, um, but I think he has, um, you know, information that they are, they are responsible bidder.
And they really mean a hundred days to delivery?
Well, the other place is a hundred and thirty, so.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty. Okay. Any more discussion?
Hope it doesn't snow a lot.
Oh, just want, yeah, just to let the Board know, this, this bid went through the, um, the FERCOT. They actually conducted the whole bid process.
So we'll have it just in time for spring.
Right, exactly.
Perfect. Okay. Tom, what do you think?
Looks fine. I just, I guess that sometimes it's just, it's amazing how, how you put a bid in and not comply with-
The actual request, yeah.
Waiting to see, yeah, waiting to see how particular the, uh-
Truck, we have a great deal of front-end loader. That's the other side we're looking for. Exactly. Good point. Okay, uh, there's no more discussion. Uh, is there a motion to accept?
Uh, motion?
Second. A motion made and seconded to accept the highway superintendent and the procurement officer's recommendation to go with H.P. Fairfield of, uh, Worcester, Massachusetts, to outfit the, uh, truck that was appropriated for this year and purchased, well, released it for purchase two weeks ago. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero, please. Okay. You have, uh, under town administrator updates, we talked about a server.
Yeah, that's the only other thing I have. This is not an action item for the Board tonight. I just want to give the Board information that you may already have, uh, from the technology audit and other sources. Uh, the town server is seven years old. Uh, it was purchased when we went with a FERCOT accounting program primarily to run the town's accounting software, fundware. It's now used for all town finance functions, and it's been increasingly and randomly shutting down without notice over the past several months. Um, the, the server shutdowns are now happening about once or twice a week. Came in this morning with another shutdown, shut down on me in the last payroll. It's shutting down a lot. Um, the loss of the server would mean loss of all town accounting and payroll functions. But this all, nine departments have access to the service for fun, uh, server for fundware information, and that would obviously, um, temporarily stop as well. Our IT contractor is now putting together specs for a new server, software updates, installation, battery backup, uh, data conversion. And in the next couple of weeks, I expect to bring a recommendation to the Board, uh, for funding the replacement. And, uh, recommend, that includes a recommendation on funding sources.
So there's a sense of urgency that the equipment is, is on, is, um, less reliable than it should be.
Yeah, there's a sense of urgency.
That's the diplomatic version.
There's a sense of urgency.
Try it.
There's a sense of urgency.
Okay.
You see Margaret downstairs whacking the side of the casing, you know, to wake it up.
I wouldn't know how to do all this stuff. Hard copy, writing everything.
Yeah, like the old days.
So we have, you think we'll have that, uh, that estimate for us, uh, our next meeting?
Yes, I would like to bring that back next week if possible, yeah.
Again, as we talk about new treasurer collector full-time coming in, we talk about the importance of the information that each of the department's exchanges and the fact that the, the residents, the town are involved in that information exchange. Every single day, somebody's accessing somehow or needs information that's hosted on that. It's important for us to make sure it's reliable.
Critical piece of operating equipment.
That is, yeah, that's continuity of operations.
Very good. Um, that's, I'm gonna, on the same subject, the, uh, uh, peer review of technology, um, we should probably have that brought forward more during the budget process.
Yes.
Because there were some recommendations that were capital-based, many of it was actually practice-based, but still, some of it was capital-based.
The technology inventory would be the start of that, so I'll talk to the contractor about that as well.
Okay. Something that I'm thinking again, is that budget, we, the review for IT and technology, as we start the budget process, bring that forward. Okay, Margaret, any other updates?
Um, that, uh, that's it for, well, Beth Greenblatt, uh, the town solar consultant, will be here at your next meeting to talk about, uh, all different pieces.
Progress on that?
Yeah, progress of the-
So we know we've been through conservation on each of the sites now, they've held planning meetings, and we're at a point now where you come forward to the Board and give us a progress update.
That's right.
Perfect. Okay.
It's getting close. Yeah, the con- contracts, agreements, getting close, yeah.
Okay, uh, board updates.
Um, we met last Tuesday, I think it was, to, uh, review, we had, uh, virtual town hall, and so we reviewed their, um, their proposal and what their stuff can do, and, and, uh, we're gonna make a final recommendation and vote on that.
December ninth, STC will be here.
Yes, that's right. They'll be at their meeting, so.
What were your thoughts, David?
What's that?
What were your thoughts?
Um, I felt better after seeing that, you know, because you get, you get the rumors and what other people think it can and can't do. Um, it's, um, it, it can definitely handle everything that we need, you know what I mean, in terms of that, and they do have, um, they have like a web app and things like that. So you can get to it from your phone, which was one of the, it, the, because when I saw that, I forget which town it was from, saying that they couldn't access the item from the web, that was, it, that, you kinda dispelled that-
Yeah.
Issue. Um, they do ins- which is interesting, they do install the software in the machine, so it's not totally web-based, but, um, so I suspect that if somebody's doing it from home, you'd have to have it installed on your machine, too.
You would. You'd have to be an authorized user to get on the site in order to put-
Right, one of those five users, but, I mean, it's, it's a little pricey, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things that if you wanna pay and not have to think about it, that's what you're getting for that. You know, and then, you know, then maybe it'll allow us to concentrate on our overall technology, you know, which we do need to do.
Content. You know what I mean? If someone else is managing it, the content is something that it would seem that we would wanna be focused on.
Right. We'll still have to, and that, and that was one of those things that we've made sure, I'm trying to be sure everybody understands, it, it doesn't matter who we use for it, we still have to-
Right.
And that's our administrative issue to grapple with, is we still have to have a point person who's gotta be responsible for getting those updates-
That makes sense.
Out there, so, you know, it, it's kind of like you've, it's almost like, think of it as, we have a, a, a job description, and then there's the tools that you can use to, to do that job, right? So, but, I, I was glad that, you know, key things, you don't have to be in the office, and they have like a mobile app, so that, like, because that, like, right now, if I need to update the blog, I give the story from my phone.
Right, right.
And we still want that kind of ease of update, you know?
Makes perfect sense. You'd be able to do something remotely.
Yes, and they do, um, which was also good, they, they have like a, um, which they automatically do a, like a mobile version of it. So if you're looking at it on a phone, it's gonna condense it down to, you know, just like the key links.
That makes sense.
You know, so that you're not, uh, like an iPad's one thing, but a phone, you've only got like that much real estate, so.
Right, right, you're gonna have. Um, the subject along the same lines, that was the virtual town hall, on the same lines on twelve nine, is are we ready to move forward with the web master migration job description?
We're gonna have to get, we'll have to have personnel committee meet and get that recommendation to the Board, too, so we'll have to talk about a date for that.
Yeah. That's true, we have to do that. And, and it kinda makes me think, too, that maybe we need to revisit, like, what, because of the role of the telecommunications committee is shifting, and they're not, and those, they used to do this, now they're not.
Right, what STC does. Right.
So now we need to kind of rethink what, the, the role of that, and, you know, and see how that evolves.
I agree, because you've got, uh, FCAT doing more of the, the, the channel fifteen, channel twelve, twenty-three programming, the thing taping.
Right.
STC started clearly as, as the, the town's, um, telecommunications, and that was driven mostly by cable.
Right.
But now we're at, uh, STC two point oh essentially. What's, what would, what's the new charge, what's the new composition, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay, so sometime after the night. Okay. Any other board updates? Tommy, the BOO meeting last week.
Let's see, what did we do last, um, first is that we had a Franklin County Selectmen's Association meeting at which there was a presentation from the, uh,
That's right.
Uh, Franklin County Sheriff's Department, and basically, they, they, um, one is they describe some of the projects at the, uh, the jail. There, there's a law in Massachusetts that, um, you can have prisoners who the sheriff can do work that would not, sometimes we bid out and- prevailing wage and all that kinda stuff. So I would say, Margaret, um, you should, at your next staff meeting, you should talk to, you should talk to our department heads. And I'm thinking specifically the, uh, the library concerning the, uh, so I know a lot of times they have a hard time with, um, um, maintenance around the, the gym, the, the landscaping around the, this library.
Own itself, yeah.
Um, that, the public safety complex, or Veterans Memorial, they're very willing to do that, um, painting. Um, we also, if, when we're doing the new ball field, we're talking about, um, if they, you need help, they, you know, the group that's down there, they would be more than willing to help. You just have to supply the, uh, the tools and the supplies, and they supply the labor.
Yep.
Um, they did about a half a million dollars worth of business last year through the town.
They painted this building, right?
They painted this building also. So I, I would, I would, uh, and I do have in the truck, and I will drop it off tomorrow, an application that you can fill out, um, and submit to them to get on their, uh, to get on their list of things to do.
It was, it was two years ago, the Riverside Cemetery used, uh, a couple of Saturdays, uh, Saturday seasonal cleanups. And, and, it was wonderful, just wonderful.
They also did the scenic, they also did a scenic turnout, uh, cleanup, uh, last year, year before.
Yeah.
Oh, did they? Oh, okay.
So, I, I mean, they want, they, the sheriff and his deputies, um, want that for their guys. Um, you know, the, the prisoners, it's good for them, it, it's something to get out on, and, and, uh, they do learn some skills. But if, uh, you know, maybe we should start thinking out, uh, the box for-
Another option.
For, for, instead of just manual landscaping techniques, maybe there's something, maybe there's help, that they could help with a webpage, or-
Yep.
You know, maybe they have that, maybe there's someone up there that has that-
Has that skill set. That's a good point.
That skill set. Probably won't be there long.
Right, right.
And most of these people that go on work release are towards the end of their, so we did discuss that. Um, we also talked, and I like to put it out there, um, we talked about the triad program once again also. And if there's, if there's any individuals that are out there that are in need of help, specifically with a triad or elderly residents, if you have mobility issues, they have, they have had donated over the last year or two, um, fifty-three, um, motorized wheelchairs.
Nice.
That they, uh, that they will, that they refurbished, that they're looking for a donation, so if you have one, looking for a place for it, they'll take it in and they will, uh, refurbish it, um, and there's people in the community that can use those. So if you need one, um, you can talk to the Sheriff's Department, they may be able to help you with that. Um, so I thought that was a pretty, and they also have, excuse me, they also have a cell, cellphone program, um, and they're also putting on, um, safety seminars and such also, so. There are a lot of things with those, um, so maybe we can get some of that information on channel fifteen as well.
That's straight triad, that particular section.
Yeah, that's triad, but that's run through the Franklin County Sheriff's. Um, the, we had a meeting, uh, also for the, the ambulance, whatever Margaret calls transitional, Board of Oversight, whatever, for the South County-
Board of Oversight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Those guys. Um, it's very, it was a, it was an interesting meeting. Um, basically, um, with everything that has to be done, there's probably no way it's gonna be up and running by January first. One of the things that's gonna, may hold us back initially is the, uh, the licensing, but the, they've already put in an application, or they're working on the application. We had people from the state, um, were at the meeting to help us plan, um, plan that. Um, we also worked with the town of Deerfield's interim, um, town administrator, working on a, a CIC grant, and I think it's-
Been submitted.
It's been submitted, had to be by Friday. It's probably up over, for the startup costs, it's probably around two hundred thousand dollars for that. It had, there's some, there's a bunch of stuff that had been identified as equipment that needs to be purchased for the startup paramedic service. Uh, we have another meeting for the, it's already scheduled for the tenth of December. Um, we're supposed to, at that point, we're supposed to have the, uh, job description hammered out for the, uh, the director. Uh, we also talked about, um, a clinical, the clinical coordinator, um, that, that will have to be named, and that's another position that's, it's a kinda like, uh, an added position to one of the others, um, people that we hire. Um, there's a lot of, there was good information, there's a lot of information, um, at that first meeting. Also, Whately offered their ambulance to the South County EMS as well. As, and, but I believe the consensus was thinking that it was a good idea, that would be kinda like the ambulance, um, that if you were having, like, at a fall festival, you could have volunteers, EMS volunteers, staff it, and they could go, you know, to park the ambulance here and/or the festival, you know, wherever's, wherever things are going on. So that, it was a, it seemed to have been received, um, positively, and probably not- So that, it was a, it seemed to have been received positively, and probably not adding a lot of cost to the program. It also would help, um, with the volunteers that we don't wanna lose, so.
Oh, that makes sense.
So it, it was, it, the first meeting, there was a, there was a whole bunch of stuff that we talked about, a whole bunch of stuff. And now it's a nut and bolts thing, but hopefully we'll have the identified, the, uh, uh, director's job description on the tenth. We'll advertise it, um, hiring soon as possible in the first part of January, I would think. And then, we're, did we need the lease agreements from the, there was a representative for the South Deerfield, Fire District was there.
And I was.
And he was gonna talk to their attorney to, uh, light up, write up a lease. So Margaret, we probably should be looking at a lease. I thought maybe we would just look at the lease agreement that we had with the Water District over at the, uh, the old fire station.
Yeah.
You know, we could probably come up with something like that and see what we, if we could put something together. But I think we need to get that, we should need to get that rolling. The, Bobby Ahern from Sunderland had the, uh, inventory of, um,
Go ahead.
The ambulances that will be in place for next week, I mean, the tenth. Everybody's supposed to be bringing their ambulance inventories, and Whitley will bring theirs also.
And then the Board of Oversight will select from those inventories the equipment that becomes part of the regional service? Uh, well, according to the IMA, and then it becomes attached, it gets attached to the IMA as a permanent attachment, right?
So the, the assets in inventory that are being moved from the member community to.
Catalogued.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that was a pretty, that was a pretty, um, it, it was, again, it was a, it was a good meeting.
Tom, was, was it just people from the Boo there, was anybody else there? Uh, we heard about South County. I'm sorry, uh, South Deerfield EMS, Fire District.
We, we had, we had, um, two members from the state were there. One of the gentlemen was a, had just, and does the inspections on ambulances, Phil, and he had just inspected Whitley's ambulance, and he says that it's probably good for another two or three years, especially if it's gonna be used in, in the way that we're, it's being projected. And he thought, you know, you're only looking at a thousand, twelve hundred dollars of operation expense for that ambulance for the next couple of years. Uh, we also had a, uh, another woman from the state that was there, Linda was also there. So, um, and, and basically the state's given this, and, and Bobby and, and those guys have been working with them to, to try to make this go as smoothly as possible. The, you did have the, uh, Fire Chief from Deerfield, South Deerfield Fire District. You also had, um, the assistant, like the assistant director from the ambulance, for the ambulance at Deerfield. We had the newspaper reporter, we had, uh, a couple, a couple of residents were there, so it was.
It's still very, very, um, interesting to some people, and I think having the, having the, uh, the state certifiers, inspectors, if you will, on the front end makes great sense.
Um, I think, well, a- actually, it's funny because, uh, um, when we're looking at the job descriptions and such, we thought we had a good one until somebody looked at it, and, and I guess it's not ADA compliant. I never knew job descriptions had to be ADA compliant, but they do.
That's interesting.
Yes, so that has to be worked on, so I think Bobby and Gary and those guys are kinda working on that right now, so.
Nice.
But, but it was pretty good, I mean, y- y- and, and we kinda reminded everybody that the town, you know, that the townspeople spoke in all of the three communities kinda with a unified voice that, you know, something that they wanted to see, and, and right now, um, and I guess that, one of the members from Whitley that was appointed, Gary Stone, was the EMT Director, EMS Director, and Whitley, who was not a big supporter for, for, for reasons, and I understand his reasons, but he, uh, is now on the, uh, he is now on the Boo, and I believe that's what democracy's all about. We're supposed to have the conversation, um, and then accept whatever the vote is and move forward. He's doing exactly that, and he's all in, a hundred thousand percent, you know, wants to make the best possible, so. And, and people that wanna still try to knock it down, they, I mean, right now we can't listen to that, we have to keep moving forward.
Right, right.
Right, white noise.
Good point, white noise.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm glad this, that's clicking along. Any other updates?
No.
If not, you know, Thursday, we're all gonna eat too much, in theory, but more importantly, take that time. In theory, take that time and, and spend it with your family, your close, close friends and relatives. Uh, we do have weather coming in, so pay attention to that, in particular with the travel days on Wednesday, and then again on Friday, and our next meeting here is a, a week from today, December second. That's all that I have. FCAT, this is your one chance, three, two, one.
Always there a motion, Richard?
Motion?
Do a second.
Um, after staying up to one o'clock watching the game last night, I will say, Margaret, you were my inspiration.
That is great. I hope I continue to be.
Margaret was my inspiration, 'cause she walked away from a Red Sox game one time, and they came back with one of their biggest, their biggest, uh, comebacks in the history of baseball. And Margaret was sitting there, front row seats.
No, I was sitting in summer.
Oh, that's right, she left the ballgame and she went to a person, and she was.
Summer football? Okay, yeah, I was there for her.
But you were my inspiration last night, I, I, so my dog, Dashar, and I, he jumped up in my lap and we watched the entire game.
That's nice. And it was well worth it.
And we were so, and we were so, we were so fired up after the game that we just had to watch all the post-game shows, and, and one o'clock came around, and I said, oh, I better go to bed, that alarm clock rang really early, at five, so.
Always does.
But Margaret, you were my inspiration, I know you would never, I know you were there watching it to the end, right, last night?
Yeah. Well.
You didn't go to bed.
I could not, hey, look, how many people out there couldn't even, I, the first half was so despicable, I, I just, I couldn't even, I, I couldn't even.
But you knew it had to get better, right?
It must've had a heck of a dunk in the halftime.
I wasn't convinced. You were, and that's what's important, you watched it till the end, good.
Even better then.
So I guess I would say happy, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yes.
Take a little time to reflect on the little things we're thankful for.
Exactly right.
Good point.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of getting Tom to bed early tonight?
Well, no, now I have to watch the Washington game because my, my niece is at the game, so she's li- sitting on the ten-yard line, two rows.
She had to pick her out of the crowd.
Uh, pick her out of the crowd, all of, it was her fiance's Christmas present, and then she found out it was right behind the Washington cheerleader, so I don't know how that's gonna go.
Whose present was it?
Uh, right, right.
Okay, on that, on that, on that note, yeah, three to zero, please, you can call us out at, uh, seven thirty-eight. Thank you, FCAT.
I stayed up for the whole game.